Wednesday, March 26th will come to order. Are there any non-agenda public comments? Seeing none, we're going to move to the approval of minutes. We have four minutes to approve and we'll do them one at a time. So, let's start with the minutes for October 9th, 2013. All were present at that meeting, so are there any changes or comments to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the regular minutes for October 9th, 2013. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. Now, moving to February 19th, 2014. In that meeting, Commissioners Batuello and Gaston were absent, so we'd asked them not to vote on this particular motion. Are there any changes or comments to those particular minutes? Seeing, hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm motion to approve the minutes from February 19th, 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving to February 26th, all were present for that meeting and any comments, changes to those minutes for our meeting? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve those meeting, those meeting minutes.
Yeah, I move to approve the regular, Bothell Planning Commission, regular, the minutes for the regular meeting, February 26th, 2014. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, March 5th, 2014. In that particular meeting, Commissioner Stahl was absent and Commissioner Cabe is noted as unexcused. We should make a change to that. Commissioner Cabe's absence should be absent and excused. So, with that one change, are there any other comments or changes to the March 5th meeting that anyone would want to bring up? Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval of the March 5th, 2014 minutes.
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of March 15th, as amended.
Uh, March 5th?
I'm sorry.
March 5th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, any new business that anyone on the commission or in the room would want to bring up? Hearing none, we're going to move now to a public hearing. Uh, I opened with that, yep. So, moving on, excuse me, we're going to open a public hearing on the potential proposed code amendments regarding residential densities in the downtown transition zone. And I might note that, depending on how this evening's meeting goes, we may move to move forward right to closing the public hearing and if ready to, um, close it and adopt the findings that are noted in our packet. So, at this point, I'll go ahead and turn the meeting over to Mr. Dave Boyd.
Thank you and good evening. Just going to have a short presentation, I think I've got seven slides and I'll go through some of those pretty quickly since they're just essentially repeats from last time. Just to introduce, for anyone listening in or who wasn't here last time, this amendment was proposed by Marlin Gabbert and Dick Taylor to remove the 20-unit per acre density limit in the downtown transition district. As we discussed last time, that density limit was added very late in the council's review of the downtown plan. There wasn't, the initial proposal by staff and the, our downtown consultant didn't include a density limit on, in the downtown transition district or any of the other downtown districts other than the Sunrise Valley View Single Family District. And, uh, there really wasn't a whole lot of analysis that went into that, that late motion and the, and what was settled on at that time of 20-unit per acre density limit. The proponents of this, Mr. Gabbert and Taylor, have presented examples of how that would affect, one particular parcel that they're looking at, I showed last time, a number of other examples in the downtown transition district of existing projects that were developed under previous zoning that are exceeding that 20-unit limit, some by a considerable, amount. So, I do have those available if anyone wants to look at any of those examples in more detail, but I'm not going to, I'll only do that if, if that's called for. Since there were no suggestions for revisions to the proposal at the study session, I haven't done any, at least significant additional analysis here for tonight. Like I said, the examples shown before are available if you'd like. This following page shows, uh, basically what I showed in the presentation last time. This amendment is pretty simple. It would just involve striking that section B1 in the special downtown transition district requirements. In fact, we'd essentially do away with the numbering since there's only one item now. It would, we'd do away with the introductory paragraph and, and no numbering. We only use the numbering if there's more than one item under a heading. There, I did, late in the process, the one question that did come up at the study hearing was a question about what would be the potential density that could be achieved in this district. And I think two of the examples I gave last time give a pretty good idea. The Gabbert proposal with nearly 50 units per acre is, is probably pretty typical of what might be achieved with no density limit and, and developers that sought to max out the, the density. That was, uh, they, that proposal did go to the full three stories allowed. It pretty much filled the site. Some sites are more efficient in their use of land and particularly for parking, just by virtue of their dimensions. This one was, I think, relatively efficient and the units that he proposed were, were relatively small. So, I think that's, that's a pretty good idea of a limit. Another example that I showed last time was the Pines Apartment Building at 185th and 101st Northeast. That could, that's a two-story apartment building with surface parking that currently is at about 51, over 51 units an acre. If we added another floor and found a way to park it, that could easily achieve a bit more than 75 units per acre. But, that's, that's a little bit more theoretical at this point and that's probably pushing the envelope of what could be achieved. Just for comparison, the Six Oaks Project, under construction on the old Ricketts Elementary Site, shown here in this image, which is split between the six-story downtown core and the five-story downtown neighborhood districts, has about 106 unit acres, units per acre. So, um, no, I think it's safe to say that no three-story downtown transition project is going to approach that density. The parking requirement's the same. This project really pushed the limit on the parking and, and again, it's mostly smaller units, studios and one bedrooms. So, it's, it's probably pushing the limit of what can be achieved in a, at least in a hybrid downtown core and downtown neighborhood district development. So, with that, again, we can look at some other examples if, if you're interested, but from this point, you can take any public testimony, deliberate. And then, as Commissioner Booth mentioned, if you're ready, we can close the, you can close the public hearing tonight and take action. Or, if you want to provide input on, on any changes or any additional information you desire from us, you could continue the, the public hearing to April. And as we discussed before the meeting, I would recommend April 30th instead of the currently scheduled April 23rd date. So.
Great, thanks Dave. Before you step down, are there any questions from any of the commissioners on Dave's presentation?
I just have one on the process, I want to make sure that, we're not actually closing these hearings, are we Dave? I think we didn't, were you here when the director asked? Let's just keep them all open in case we have public testimony at the later date or we're going to do these all at one time?
Well, I think that was in reference to the, the hearings on the-
You're right, nevermind.
Plan and code update, yeah.
You're correct.
I was thinking that as well, but I think this one is actually outside-
It is, I had the two, I was thinking of something else and I am-
Good question, actually. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, thanks Dave. So, at this point, we'll turn it over to the public. And is there anyone in the audience representing the public that would have any questions or comments about this particular change that we're looking at, at this moment? Please step forward and give us, you can give us your name and where you reside and limits your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Rex Allen, I live here in Bothell. I'm an architect and a project manager for real estate developers. I recently had an opportunity to look at one of the parcels under consideration here and did a layout to see what sort of density could be achieved. And I, I only used basically the setback, open space and parking requirements to see, kind of test this option. And, uh, what I discovered is that the, um, the parking and height limitation is really sufficient to control the density. This is a layout I did here, you can see the buildings are light blue there. And in the transition zone on the left here of the screen, um, the sort of maximum density I could achieve was about 28 units per acre because it was constricted by the open space and, um, parking requirements. So, those aspects of the code are effective in keeping the density to the levels that are desired without the, um, additional, uh, unit, unit per acre density overlay. Actually, this, uh, this layout is a little bit short of the, uh, open space required. So, and there's other problems with it too, but, uh, the, uh, the density is, is restricted by those things quite accurately.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your, your comments. I can tell you that, Mr. Allen, your comments are in line with the thinking of the commissioners here. And that is that the other restrictions in place on the property, as you mentioned, around parking and around height, will provide that kind of, kind of natural restriction that we're looking for. Really, the need for this additional language isn't necessary, but it's nice to have someone with your expertise kind of confirm that for us.
My pleasure.
Any, any other questions or comments for Mr. Allen before he steps down? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Uh, any other public comments or questions? Okay, uh, oh, I'm sorry, please step forward and provide, with your, your name and, yeah, I know you live in Bothell, but just give us for the record your name.
Uh, David Vleed, resident and homeowner on northeast 189th Street, just south of Maywood Hills. And I guess I was just unfamiliar with what came before, what I just heard about, but it sounds like we're possibly considering an increase in number of units per acre. And, uh, my biggest concern, I guess with that would be how it would impact traffic flow in the core of Bothell going forward. And how would we be able to, and I don't know if this is, maybe I'm misconstrued, maybe this increased number of units per acre is outside of the downtown corridor, but I was just wondering how traffic would be impacted due to an increase from the current amount.
Okay, that's a good question. So, the impact on traffic from the change, I don't know if we have any particular comments for, for David now or if, uh, Dave Boyd, if there'd be anything that you'd be able to provide in the way of feedback now or if we could come back with that? Thank you very much for your, your question.
So, um, lifting the density limit would lead to more units and I think a small incremental increase in, in traffic. When we did the downtown plan, we did a planned action environmental impact analysis and it was based on the proposed regulations, which did not have a density limit. So, the, the traffic analysis showed that, that the, the traffic capacity was adequate for, for what's being proposed here tonight. So, so I guess the question is, yes, there will be a slight incremental increase, but it's, it's all within the, the limits that were studied in the EIS.
Okay? Thank you. And thanks for your question. Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, at this point, I think that we would want to decide here at this point whether we want to continue this public hearing or if we are, if we have any other questions or comments on it, or are we ready to close the public hearing and potentially adopt the findings? So, I'll take any comments or questions on that.
Yeah, I, I had a very naive question. How, so how, how does it work with the parking? So, so we're talking about unit density, but are there similar regulations about the type of parking options, open lots, underground lots, things like that?
The parking requirements remain the same, so the, it's still .75 per bedroom for residential uses. Still the same calculation for commercial uses as well. And the parking types that are allowed remain the same as well. So, um, the, the plan in general encourages structured parking, but it doesn't necessarily require it. There's a parking minimum and there's also a parking maximum that applies to surface parking. So, um, to try to avoid lots of large surface parking lots within the downtown sub area. Other parking provisions require that parking access be taken from alleys where available and, or from side or back streets. So, I think the, and, and parking really is probably going to become, without the density limit, will become the controlling factor, the major controlling factor in how many units can be put on a, a piece, piece of land. You basically figure out how many cars you can park on a site and then, and then see if you can get enough units or can, can get the units within the, the height and setback limits.
But, um, so would a builder have an option of, say, building an underground parking garage in a very high-density residential structure?
That would be an option. The density then would be limited by the height and setback limits. But, uh, in general, with this, this type of intensity of limited to three stories, building underground parking is going to be, in most cases prohibitively expensive. So, what we would probably be likely to see here is what's called tuck-under parking, where it's not fully underground, but partially underground. Or the, the example that we saw last week, the Gabbert Architects' proposal was essentially a type of tuck-under parking where, where the parking was underneath the structure, but it wasn't, the access lane was outside the structure.
Thanks.
I got a question. I'm sorry. Mr. Sam.
Just for the fact that there wasn't much analysis done on the first proposal, 20 per acre. Was there anything that we learned from that or was there any drawback?
Well, we haven't had any applications for development in the downtown transition district and I don't know that that's entirely due to that density limit, but, um, I think that's, that could be one factor. I guess the other factor is, is, I guess, the takeaway lesson for me is when, when there's any inkling of a late change like that, to try to be prepared to offer some other options. And I think in this case, the proposal was actually to impose a 15-unit per acre, if my memory serves, which is basically what, what it was previously in most of this district, which was our 2,800 zoning, which essentially equates to 15 units per acre. So, we did convince council to, to go with a somewhat higher amount, but, uh, we weren't really ready for that, that late amendment, so.
Thank you. Mr. Cabe?
I just had a follow-up question regards to Commissioner Stahl's question on parking. And in light of Mr. Allen's design, maybe it's no longer pertinent, but just a global take on parking, how are we preventing, I guess, excess parking that doesn't fit within these developments from bleeding on the streets? And is there any provisions in the future, like we saw off Beardsley, where they're implementing a permit system to sort of limit some excess parking from clogging up neighborhoods?
Well, permit parking is one tool that can be used if, if there does become a spillover parking problem. But, um, that particular issue was, was not spillover parking from residential development, it was from the campus and the park and ride. So, we have, we've yet to see whether there truly is a spillover parking. I guess there have been some claims of some spillover parking from the 104 project, but I don't know that we have any real evidence of that as yet. Other things that can be done is institute time limited, time limited parking so that it's not really available for someone who leaves, wants to leave their car there all day or, or for multiple days. Actually, there already is, are limits on, on parking on the street for long, you know, multiple days. The, um, and one, one of the points I made at council when we were discussing the, the general downtown corridor parking amendment was that, uh, the same issue that really led to the permit parking issue, which is people like to be able to park in front of their house or, you know, on, on or very, very close adjacent to their, where they live. I think the same is true for the people that live in these apartments. They're going to want parking on their site or very close to their site. So, you don't often have spillover parking issues from residential developments. It's usually from some other development where you've got folks coming in from out of the neighborhood, going to an event or going to, to school or, or going to catch a bus and when they don't have groceries to haul and that sort of thing. Our experience has been that, that for residential development, people really do want to be able to park onsite. So, um, so we think that, also because of the, our experience with this, the King County Right Size Parking Study, that, that we, the requirements that we have really are as close as, as, as practical to what the actual parking utilization is, so. So, we don't anticipate that, but we will be monitoring that and, and using some of these other tools if, if necessary.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not advocating, you know, large surface lots sitting empty 95% of the year, but, um, as downtown Bothell becomes more attractive place to develop, you know, some of the downtown, downtown core development could push parking out, you know, into the transitional area, especially if some of the apartment buildings start charging for parking and people want to save some money and they'll just street park. I just want to be cognizant moving forward that we, you know, take our future parking needs into consideration.
Yeah. That's a good point and I think probably the, what we're most concerned about is, is in that downtown core where you might have some competition between residential and business parking, that, that we won't have enough, that there won't be enough convenient parking for the folks coming to shop or eat at the restaurants in, in that new development. So, so we'll, and that's where the, the tool of doing time limited parking is, is probably going to be most effective.
Dave, you might also comment on the, just a little, you mentioned it, but just a little bit more on what you and I testified before city council on last week with regards to parking in the general downtown corridor and looking at that metric between .75 and actually what the city council ended up doing there.
Yeah, I was going to touch on that in the reports for staff even though it says none, but I'll go ahead and, so, city council did, um, go along with the general downtown corridor amendments, except that they, they didn't feel that .75 stalls per bedroom was enough and increased that to one stall per bedroom. I had recommended that if they wanted to look at a different requirement there, that, that we come back to them, do some additional analysis and come back and perhaps institute a graduated requirement. The reason being that going to a one-stall per bedroom requirement means that I think will be a disincentive to building any sort of family-oriented housing. If you're building three-bedroom apartments or townhouses, you'll have a, have to park three cars, which is more than, than you, than the previous code. So, I think in the portion of the general downtown corridor, close to the campus, the effect won't be too severe because that's going to be mostly studios and one bedrooms, I believe, based on what the market's doing now. But there are some parts of the general downtown corridor that, where we might have seen some more family-oriented housing, like some sites up in the northwest corner of the downtown sub area behind Rite Aid. But, uh, frankly, I think the, the most likely area for that sort of larger, uh, more bedroom, larger apartment development or larger condo development, if, if anyone ever starts financing condos, would be in, in areas like, like this, where we still have the .75 per bedroom, which still actually winds up to being more, more than the citywide code if you do go to a three-bedroom unit, but it's, it's a fairly small increment above that, so.
Right, thank you. Any other comments or questions for, for Dave? Hearing none. I think our next step is really to make a determination as to whether we're needing to continue this public hearing or are we prepared to make a motion to close it? So, I'm interested in any comments or discussion on that and if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
And I'll just add, the, the public hearing in, being referenced is on the proposed code amendments regarding down, residential densities in the downtown transition zone. So, the motion is to close the public hearing for that particular item. Uh, do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed on this issue. And I believe at this point, Dave, we're ready to discuss and potentially adopt the findings. So, if you'd like to take us through what the impact would be actually on our particular language in our documents, let's-
So, you had, you had the draft findings in your packet and I've got them up on the screen now.
I think in our, I'm looking in our packet, Dave, and I-
We didn't have them.
I don't think we had, we, but we have your memo and we have the- We, but we have your memo, and we have the page from the downtown plan that you referenced, but the actual findings that you're having up on your screen, we don't. But we can follow along with you.
Okay. And I apologize for that. That was a mistake in the production of the packets. So, the first page of the findings here on the screen are pretty much standard boilerplate.
Dave, just one second. Would you mind zooming in, just because we don't have it here?
Thank you.
Got to be able to see that.
How's that?
That's better?
That's good for me.
I think everybody's nodding, better than it was.
Thanks.
So, again, the first three findings are basically boilerplate findings. The fourth describes briefly this proposed amendment. The findings under public notice, finding five and all the bullet points under that are, again, pretty standard items describing how we do public noticing. Then, under process, that starts to get more specific. Again, it's pretty standard format, but giving the actual dates of the study session and the public hearing, since we're closing the public hearing tonight, no need to change that. There are no exhibits, I don't believe, so I should actually change finding 11 to reflect that. Findings 12 and 13, I will be sending this for review by the Department of Commerce and doing SEPA notice based on your decision here tonight. And then, again, at the bottom, the request amendment 14, again, describes the amendment in terms of what the code implications are. And then, starting at the bottom with finding 15, this, these are your, the comprehensive plan, or in this case, community vision and city actions, elements of the downtown plan, the background for this code amendment. And what I've done here is basically quote verbatim the section that I showed last, at the study session, from the community vision section of the downtown plan for the downtown transition district, basically describing what the intent and what kind of development is intended for that district. And then, at the bottom of page three, we get into specific planning commission findings. I'm going to go ahead and read these. So, 16, the planning commission finds that the current 20 dwelling unit per acre density limit places an unnecessary restriction on development in the downtown transition district that would otherwise be consistent with the vision for that area and the downtown in general. 17, the planning commission finds that the existing regulations for uses, height and setbacks, provides adequate protection for the residential zones adjacent to the downtown transition district. And 18, the planning commission finds that removing the density limit as originally proposed would provide the kind of transitional zone and medium-density housing between the surrounding residential districts and the denser downtown, denser central downtown districts. So, that's really the, kind of, the meat of the findings, and we can come back to any of these. The proposed regulations, again, are a little bit more fully explained in finding 19. Finding 20 is public testimony, to which I would add the two, the testimony that we got tonight. There have been no exhibits. And then, the conclusions, again, this is pretty much pro forma. Oh, I need to change number two there, the left carryover from the general downtown corridor amendments. So, that would read, the proposed code amendments promote the public interest by providing for reasonable protections, reasonable transition from the general, the central downtown districts to the surrounding residential areas, without limiting the density within the general downtown, or within the downtown transition district. And then, the recommendation would be, is correct, citing the specific section. So, if there are any proposed changes, wordsmithing, any additional findings that commissioners feel should be included here?
So, any particular comments, questions for Mr. Boyd on the findings, the amendments, not only the process, but the particular items, 16, 17, 18? He's confirmed to us that he'll modify the language around March 26 and include comments from this evening. And so, I guess I would ask the commissioners if there's any other tweaks, comments, changes that you would make to the findings. Hearing none, I'd, at this point, entertain a motion that we approve the findings as written.
Yeah, I approve that, I mean, I make a motion that we approve the findings, recommendations, and conclusions as amended, as Dave will amend those and authorize the chair to sign the revised findings, recommendations, and conclusions for the code amendments regarding residential densities in the downtown transitional zone.
Second?
And as the chair, I'll ensure that the motion, as Commissioner Gaston has described, will in fact happen. So, I think at this point, we're ready to go ahead and take a vote. So, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record note that the motion passed unanimously. So, moving on, we have no additional study session for this evening, and Dave, you mentioned you might have any old business or reports from staff, or have you concluded that with your comments on the general downtown corridor parking?
One other item, in addition to the general downtown corridor amendments, council last week considered the downtown sign amendments, including both A-frames and the miscellaneous sign amendments that you recommended, and they did pass those with one caveat. There was, they agreed with the planning commission that there was a need to look at the regulations for A-frame signs citywide, but they took, went a step further and only approved the proposed amendments to the A-frame signs that brought us into compliance with the First Amendment issues, allowing A-frame signs for all businesses, and deferred action on the rest of the A-frame sign amendments until we can do a citywide review of our A-frame sign regulations. So, given that we've got the periodic plan and code update in front of the planning commission from now, and then council into mid next year, it's, well, it's possible that we could bring that back in, after the planning commission finishes its work on the code update, after it goes to council. So, it could happen before that's finalized, but there, well, there was some degree of urgency in the direction from council, but I think we just, we'll have to look at whether we have the staff time, and whether we have time on your agenda to bring it forward any sooner. In reality, the difference between what was recommended and the citywide regulations is, in the end, was fairly minimal, but there will be some need to look at the citywide regulations and see if we want to make those equal to the downtown regulations, or make any changes at all, so.
Thanks, Dave. I might add that I've had a chance to represent the planning commission to the city council at several meetings, and it's been pleasing to me to see the level of seriousness that the city council takes our recommendations. They come from a starting point of why not they should adopt what we recommend. They certainly discuss it. As he mentions, they add their tweaks and their changes, as they're going to do, but the work that we are doing is really making a difference, and it's a pleasure to see that at the city council. So, thanks a lot. Sure.
On the signs, Dave, you know, I'm looking forward just to come back on the city, because one of the things that bothered me, I didn't want to, we were just, we kind of punted that forward on the fact that the changes that we pressed forward were just to get us through the, partially was to get us on the First Amendment, so. But coming back to the city, at least from my perspective, I believe there could be quite a bit of changes, and I wouldn't think that this is just going to be housekeeping once we see that again, so, at least from my opinion.
Yeah, point, we'll take him. Any other comments? Okay. Any other reports from staff or comments, Dave?
I did just think one other change that they made to the sign recommendations. This was one that was brought to us by a developer after you'd made your recommendations. They did go into the citywide regulations to increase the size of exempt directional signs from two feet, two square feet to six square feet with the, after seeing some examples of how small a two-square-foot sign looked on some of the larger developments that we're seeing downtown, and particularly ones proposed for the very wide boulevard. So, we thought that was a reasonable code amendment, and we've actually run into some issues with the size being difficult, even in some developments outside of the downtown, so we felt it was justified to make that as a citywide amendment, so.
Great, thank you. Moving on in our agenda, any reports or comments from any of the members of the commission? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Hearing a second? All in favor? Aye?